I'm sorry.
Are all the kids here for the?
Call this meeting to order.
They were.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Oops, I tried to turn it on. Sorry.
Councilmember Barnes.
Won't let me.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French. And Mayor Domingo.
That way.
Clerk Domingo, because both the mayor and the mayor pro tempore are absent tonight, a member of the council needs to move to amend the agenda to have a temporary mayor pro temp for this evening only, and there needs to be a supermajority vote to add the agenda, to add the item to tonight's agenda, and then that person can take over at that point.
So just the amendment on the agenda first?
Yeah, you need to add the amendment to the agenda, an appointment of a mayor pro temp for tonight's meeting.
For? I'd like to make a motion to...
Wait, wait, you have to vote on the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Reed?
Yes.
Can I make the motion now? I'd like to make a motion to select city councilmember Cheryl Kraus as our acting pro temp for the day.
That's fine.
You got a second? Somebody need a second?
I'll second it. Yeah, there was a second.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Decker?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a moment of silence to be observed, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will skip the roll call since we did that first. Mayor and councilmember comments? Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make tonight?
Maurice? My first one is I'd like to ask the city council and the citizens of Albion to send up a prayer for Kim Estelle. She was a city council candidate for the first precinct this past year. She's in a health situation, and she needs our prayers. I'd just would like to send that up. Secondly, I'd like to thank some community members that really highlighted our city. I see Mrs. Simpson regularly doing her flowers around the town, and Mrs. Craig, and also through their church and the community service work that they're doing. I'd just like to recognize them. Finally, I'd like to recognize Parks Drugs. They put on the Sunday at the Shell event, and I attended this Sunday on my bike, and it was for the children, and it was just wonderful. I mean, there was so many people there. It was really amazing, and I just want to hats off to... What's their names again? The Parks, on Parks Drug Store?
John.
John and...
And Terry.
And Mrs. Sheehan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maurice. Anyone else? And then we'll move on to presentations. The first presentation tonight is from the Tree Committee and Ismen House Updates with Mike Herman.
Good evening. Good evening. It's nice to be back. Just, we try, once a year at least, to come and provide an update on some of the committees that I'm working with, because I think it's important for council, number one, to kind of be brought up to date on what we're doing, but also have an opportunity, maybe if you have questions, to get those answered. Tree Committee actually has been pretty busy this year. Many of you may know, there was funding that was provided from our sister city of Noir Zee La Wa, France, came to the Lions Club, and then to the Tree Committee to plant trees. It was in recognition of the straight line wind damage that we had in town a couple years ago. What's kind of interesting about that is it's several years ago, they had a similar kind of situation in France, and so people in the community of Albion raised funds and sent money over there so they could plant trees, so they kind of got to do the same thing in retrospect. So that was good. David Green, who is the director of the White House Nature Center at the Albion College, handled selecting the trees that would be done, and then actually handled with some interns and other assistants getting it planted in the city. We also work pretty closely with the Albion River Committee. Their primary focus, obviously, is the river, but they've been working with SEMCO when we did the cleanup over off of Eaton Street. Part of the cleanup there and the redoing of the restoration was that SEMCO planted trees in that area. They worked with the River Committee, and they've actually provided some funding to them, because the anticipation was that some of the trees, over time, wouldn't make it, and so the River Committee could then plant more later. So they still have some funds available, and they'll be monitoring that particular area. Tree Committee used some of their funds this year to buy some trees, part of which were planted actually in the community, in some of our parks along the street. David Green and some of his interns planted 12 trees in the city, and then we had 12 smaller ones we added to the tree nursery. In addition, I worked with a couple of employees in the street department. Harry Longdon arranged for a couple of them to help me. We planted about 15 trees from the nursery out into the city and the parks along the streets, and obviously, that's the goal of the tree nursery, is to provide, take small trees, grow them, and transplant them throughout the city. And we appreciate the help we get from the employees in doing the planting. On the attached to your sheet that I handed out is an inventory of where we're at currently in the tree nursery. We have about 93 trees at various stages of development. There's about 20 or so that are big enough that we could transplant them in the city. The committee will be advertising later this month for trees for sale. We charge $30. The reason for the charge is to, number one, help us buy seedlings to put back in the nursery, as well as we kind of feel if the person buying the tree puts a little bit of money, that they're going to take a little better care of it. So $30 is not a lot. They can actually come down to the nursery, pick the tree if they want to, or we'll be glad to do that for them. The Tree Committee has about $2,000 still in its account. We will not be doing a fall fundraiser. I anticipate the committee will do a fundraiser in the spring along with their Arbor Day activities. This continues to be a cooperative effort between the college and the city. We think it's been pretty successful, and we're always looking for new people on the committee. If somebody has an interest in trees and wants to help with work in the nursery or planning, they can contact the city, and they'll get ahold of somebody on the committee. So that's kind of a quick update. If there are any questions, I'll try to answer them.
The red dogwood and the red bud, are those flowering trees?
One of the problems we've got, we've got red dozier dogwoods that really, for most people, they tend to be a bush rather than a tree, and we've tried to make trees out of them, and we haven't been real successful. David Green has suggested we try to plant them along the river in an area where we want to try to have some protection at the bank, because we don't think they're trees that the citizens are going to buy. The red bud, on the other hand, are a nice tree. They'll be red leaves in the spring and summer, and we've got a couple of nice sized ones down, but I don't know that they produce any fruit or anything. There is, there may be a flower on them. I'm not the person to ask that question, I guess.
I was thinking about down in the park, because there's a couple down there that may be...
And if people have suggestions of where you think we need trees, if you just either get them to the city manager's office, and they'll make sure that somebody on the committee is aware of it, because we do have, what we try to do is if trees aren't as straight, if some of them aren't as nice, we'll plant those in the parks and whatever, as opposed to selling the nicer ones to people for $30.
Mike, one question. The trees that you're talking about that are large enough to sell to the community, they don't necessarily have to go in the tree lawns, though? They can go in your regular...
What we would like them to do is sometimes we put them behind the sidewalk, particularly if it's power lines. We're not really excited about planting them in somebody's backyard when people want to see it. So we encourage them to be in the front yard area, but we're pretty lenient as far as where they go. We do have to do, if we're close to the sidewalk or street, we do have to do miss dig, which takes 72 hours before we can actually dig and plant.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the trees?
Okay, I'll move on to the Ismen House. Thank you. Put on my other hat and talk a little bit about the Ismen House. As some of you may remember, the Ismen House actually is owned by the Downtown Development Authority, and we have an agreement, friends of the Mary Sheldon Ismen House has an agreement with the DDA to try to restore and operate the Ismen House. I've attached the most recent financial statement, so you can see what some of our expenditures are. We have currently about $42,000 in our account, which is a nice amount of money. However, $30,000 of that is dedicated to the grant project that's going to start later this fall. Typically, our expenses for running the Ismen House are about $10,000 to $12,000 per year. We tend to be able to raise those funds from the rental and a few fundraisers that we do, so it's, for the most part, self-sustaining as far as the operation is concerned. I am kind of happy to report, I'd ask city manager Cheryl Mitchell if she would join the board. She agreed to do that, and the board put her on the board at our last meeting on August 12th, so we welcome her there, and we think it's nice to have a time with city staff on the committee. Every year in September, we have an annual meeting. It's open to the public. Actually, all of our meetings are open to the public, anybody would like to come, but at the September 22nd annual meeting, it's a Tuesday night at 5:00 at the Ismen House, we will be electing officers for the next two years. All of our officers are run for two-year period, and they're all up this year. So you're more than welcome to attend the meeting. We'll also be talking about plans for the renovation of the second and third floor. We're also always looking for new board members. If you know somebody who's interested in preserving historic structures in the community, just have them get ahold of somebody on the board, we'd be happy to talk to them about joining and participating. As you know, our effort primarily this year is going to be in doing the renovation of the second and third floors with the support of the DDA and the city council and the Albion Trust. We were successful in getting a $120,000 grant from the State Historic Preservation Office. We were matching that with $50,000 from the trust and $30,000 from the Ismen Board, and so it'll be a $200,000 project to finish the Ismen House, which we're excited about at this point. We, right now, it looks like bids will go out on September 10th, and they will be due in October 2nd. We're encouraging all of our local contractors to submit bids. This does have to go to the State Historic Preservation Office for them to approve who you recommend, and we pretty much have to go with low bidder unless there's some valid reason that we can disqualify the bidder. So hopefully, by October, we'll know who the contractor's going to be. We do have the necessary funds for the construction. We will continue our fundraising efforts. We do have a fall campaign, fall-winter. We're going to need to buy tables and chairs and furniture for the second and third floor, and there's always other things we can use some funding for, so you will see the newsletter and the fund drive later this year. One of the things that'll happen when the completion of the renovation is the third floor, if you've been there, is much larger as far as being open. We can handle much larger events. We do turn people away that have wedding receptions that want to see 120, 130 people. We just don't have that room on the first floor. So hopefully, we'll see some increased activity, we'll be better able to serve the community. Again, the goal all along, number one, was to renovate the building, but number two, to make it usable by the community. We try to keep our rates reasonable, particularly in comparison to private rental facilities, and we do get a lot of use by people in the community. So if you're going to have a family reunion, you want to have a business training session, wedding receptions, baby showers, all that kind of thing, you know, please contact Marjorie Ulbrich, who's, she and Harley Ulbrich, her husband, handle the rentals for us, and they'd be glad to let you know if it's available and talk to you about what the rate would be. Again, we want to thank the State Historic Preservation Office, the City of Albion, the DDA, the Albion Trust, as well as the Albion Community Foundation, who's been good to us, as well as the philanthropic women. They've all been real supportive of the Ismen House over time. I expect we'll have a grand opening, maybe sometime next summer, to invite the public in and see the thing when it's all done. I think everybody will be pleased by that, so. Anyway, I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike? Don't sit down yet. The, for those of you who don't know, Mike and Melissa are going to be moving away from our fair city toward the end of the month, hopefully. And we wanted to thank Mike tonight for all the years and all the different hats he has worn, and we're going to miss you. Your presence will be missed, but that doesn't mean you're not going to get phone calls.
That's all right.
So be prepared. But congratulations to you and Melissa for really, really retiring.
I guess that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I think that's...
We're going to miss the people. We've enjoyed our, close to 15 years.
I was going to say, it's been 15, sure.
We've enjoyed being involved in the community. That's one of the things nice about Albion, is people do volunteer and do get involved, so there's a real good sense of community, so.
Well, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss you also, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
We'll go to number B now. Nidia Wolf, raising the minimum age of legal access to tobacco products.
Hello. There's a move underfoot in Calhoun County to try and raise the age of purchasing smoking tobacco products to, from 18 to 21. This makes sense, because we have the age of 21 for alcohol, and it just would combine, make it easier on merchants who are trying to get an age on a person purchasing. They'll just be able to do both at the same time. 95% of adult smokers begin smoking before age 21, and four out of five people become regular daily smokers before 21. Raising the minimum age of legal access to tobacco products to 21 years of age will likely prevent or delay initiation by young people. Reduce smoking prevalence, improve the health of young people, improve maternal fetal and infant health outcomes, and reduce smoking-related mortality. There are numerous people who end up getting cancer or other types of illnesses due to smoking, and it is costing our health system all kinds of money. The Institute of Medicine concluded that raising the age of legal access to tobacco products to 21 years of age will likely prevent or delay initiation of tobacco use by adolescents and young adults. Immediately improve the health of adolescents and young adults, improve maternal fetal and infant health outcomes, and substantially reduce smoking prevalence, smoking-related mortality over time, and predicted that raising the age now to 21 nationwide would result in approximately 249,000 fewer premature deaths, 45,000 fewer deaths from lung cancer, and 4.2 million fewer years of life loss for those born between 2000 and 2019. We want to be a part of stopping this, this, this beginning of smoking at a younger age, and by moving to, to raise the minimum age, then we can, we can do that. This has been done in Hawaii, the state of Hawaii has become the first state to raise the minimum age, and there are many, over 80 locales around the country who have already done this, and we're just trying to get the state of Michigan to join along, so that's what we're looking at. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Nidia?
Actually, the only question I would like to move, though, that we table this with two members being absent and address it at a later date.
The one question, the one question I have, so you said this is a county initiative? Have any of the other municipalities made?
They're, they're still working on it. This came out of Battle Creek. So there's a tobacco coalition in Battle Creek that is working on this, and actually, they were surprised that I was the first one going before a city council to bring it to you folks. They just have, you know, since they're just beginning, but they're trying to get this movement to go throughout Michigan.
I had a question. Nidia, is this also, does this include e-cigarettes?
Yes. Yes.
I don't have my packet. I have, I didn't pick it up. I was on vacation. However, are you asking for the City of Albion to start this, to make this a ordinance?
A resolution that you would join the rest of the county with approving of this move.
I wondered if Scott Kim, if there's going to be any enforcement issues with the Police Department? I wonder if that's an option?
Shouldn't, it should not be. Scott is shaking his head no.
Aye.
But I think we need to wait until we move on to the other part of the agenda, now that you've presented. The other thing is, we need to take action on Becky's move to table. Do we? Go ahead and do it at the end, you're not, okay. So thank you, Nidia.
Yes.
EDC update with Peggy Sint.
Hi, Peggy Sint, president of Albion Economic Development Corporation, 309 North Superior. Just wanted to give you a brief update on a bunch of different things that are going on. First of all, the one that everybody wants to know about first and loudest is the hotel project. I know council's all aware, but perhaps some of the people who are listening or not, the state of Michigan did approve granting $1 million to the project, which was the last piece of their financial package, and that has made it possible for them to move forward. So we've been working with the developer since then, continuing to work with him since then, and there are a lot of issues to resolve or to work through. We've got property transfers that have to take place, and I think there's an alley that has to be brought to you for abandonment, and just lots of stuff like that. They're working on drawings. There are no drawings yet. If you've seen a rendering or a sketch or something of what it looks like, that was just sort of a placeholder so that the state could have some concept of what the block would look like filled in, but they don't actually have a nice picture of what they're proposing to do, so. But that will all be coming along at some point here in the next several months. There is a lot of interest being generated in the business community by the hotel project. There are a lot of people who are thinking about other businesses that could perhaps support, benefit from the traffic that would come from a hotel. So I'm, our level of interest for people, particularly in the community, for business startups, has really spiked lately, which is great. Homegrown businesses are really the core of what we hope to have happen here, and they range, most of that kind of stuff has to do with downtown, so it might be retail, it might be commercial, like a restaurant or something like that, but lots of different ideas floating around out there. And don't quote me that we're getting a new restaurant, because I just said that, because that's not what I meant. It's just, there's a lot of chatter and thought being given to different ways to develop businesses. And again, council knows this, but maybe everybody else doesn't. The more things that you have happening at the same time, first of all, there's more excitement about it, but it also means that you develop critical mass. You've got people who are coming to the community to stay at the hotel, shop in a new store, eat in a restaurant. If there are two or three new restaurants, or two or three old restaurants, for that matter, which we have some wonderful restaurants, the more we have, the more people will come here seeking that kind of event or activity. So competition is a good thing, and it does bring more people into the community. So the foot traffic we'll get from the hotel will be great. The college is talking about an expansion to its equestrian center, and again, that will be something that will include some show facility, which means that they'll be bringing in people from out of town who will be taking part in horse shows and other kinds of equestrian events. That would mean people who need to stay in hotels, people who need to eat in restaurants, buy things in stores, all that kind of stuff. So all this stuff starts to happen and kind of build and really generate a lot of traction. It's a really exciting time. I know you all know that. You've been part of this discussion for a long time, but again, to keep people in the community informed. This isn't an EDC thing, but the DDA has recently given out a number of facade grants, which will, is money that building owners downtown can use to supplement what they were going to spend to maybe paint the building, put on a new roof, replace windows, could be anything about the shell of the building. There were 11, I think, that were granted? So that's exciting, too. That means that there are 11 pieces of property that are going to have a facelift of some kind or another, which is, again, good stuff. It all continues to support this, so it's good to see that people who are out in the community and doing something downtown are taking advantage of this opportunity to benefit from it. Let's see. Cheryl has put together some meetings. Let's see, we've met with USDA World Development recently. They are, we talk about incentives and ways to help businesses get projects going. We talk about infrastructure needs for the community, things like that. USDA World Development has money to help with those things, and they seem to be very interested in Albion at the moment, so we're trying to figure out, excuse me, how to take, make good use of that money. Sometimes that will help with, oh, maybe renovations to buildings downtown. We're hoping to find some money to do some demolition of some major eyesores in the community, but we're struggling on that one a little bit still. But a lot of that kind of activities going on all the time, trying to find sources to take care of community needs. Michigan Economic Development Corporation is, of course, a major partner in a lot of these things. They've also been willing to help us with some press. I know council received a link to a video that they did about the hotel, which I thought was so cool. They did a great job with it. If you haven't seen National Geographic, they have a, in the last couple of months, I think, have a special piece that they did on Detroit, and it has, on their website, there are a number of video clips about interviews with different people talking about what's going on in Detroit. It's, if you've seen the Chrysler ads, it's sort of in that same tone, and it's the same tone that the hotel video was. I have this pet project, if I can figure out how to find some money for it, I would really like to do something like that about Albion. I just, I love the tone. It's so... I just, I love the tone. It's so real and gritty and very, very positive. It's really pretty exciting. So I think it kind of fits with everything else that's happening, so we'll see. Food Hub, um, you may have seen some activity down at 112 East Erie Street, the building that the Albion Building Authority owns. That construction is well underway. We've done asbestos abatement and there ripping and tearing. And, um, that is expected to be completed, they said December 6th. Now, we'll see if that holds, but that's the date they're projecting, if, um, if we don't run into any major snags. But sometime in December, at any rate, we expect to have that completed. Brimbo, um, which is the bill, the, um, company in Albion Township, actually, is four miles, maybe, south of town, something like that, that's putting up the new foundry. That project is really coming along very well. And they're, they're very interested in partnering in the community. They spend a lot of time focused on business, which is a good thing, because we want them to succeed so they can continue to hire people. But, uh, but they do have, um, a love for doing community service kinds of things, too. So, um, they've been approached, um, for at least one project in Albion that I'm aware of. There may be some others. We'll see what happens. But, um, in addition to doing their job, which is to build car parts, um, they're a good corporate citizen, too. Um, I, I'm not sure, um, I think Garrett, you were the one that brought this up. Was there anything in particular that you or anybody else in council wanted to hear about?
Uh, so the, I guess, two questions. So with the, with the Brimbo, um, plant, um, in terms of, uh, transportation, uh, feel, to the fact, I mean, have they talked about that? What can we do, um, potentially to, um, make sure that people who are, you know, in Albion?
Can get there.
Can get there.
Yeah. Uh, we actually were talking about that with somebody from Senator Peters' office this afternoon. Um, Cheryl, you actually have more direct, uh, discussions going on about transportation generally. Do you have anything you want to add?
It was just some initial conversations in regards to the opportunity to look at a regional transportation authority.
Okay.
Um, but wasn't specific to the Brimbo situation, but in general, we understand that transportation is a major component to getting the workforce to the places of employment here.
Did you say you had a second question?
Yeah, so then the second question's kind of more, uh, I guess, higher question. So in terms of the EDC, like in terms of, um, like, long-term planning and, and goals and strategy for what, um, the EDC's gonna do in the, in the future, how? Is, are there any kind of key, I mean, obviously, the hotels won't be something that we want to support. Um, but, um, I guess, long-term, um, has, has the board, um, had any discussions about, I guess, long-term future projects, future, um, um, you know, funding, those kinds of things? Like any, like, long-term planning and has it taken place, or is there plans to?
Um, there've been some discussions about that over the last two or three years.
Okay.
Um, and of course, the personal property tax situation is a real question mark for the city as well as for us. Uh, nobody knows what that's gonna look like, or if there'd be any kind of replacement of those tax revenues. So, um, there are a lot of big question marks that, you know, will have a major impact on what happens. We work a lot with Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and I anticipate that will continue. We work a lot with our regional, um, organization, Southwest Michigan, uh, regional partners, I think. I think that's the last half of it. That both of those are places to share leads, expertise, um, do some, some learning together, that kind of stuff. We're a small community, and we, even in the best of days, we don't have the, haven't had the kind of money that you could go, um, ramming around the world looking for jobs. Of course, everybody has that, they've got that idea that that's what they ought to do. But really, our best efforts come through word of mouth. I just had somebody contact me today about something.
Okay.
But I think that there's more planning to be done. And, you know, at some point, there'll be a change of guard at EDC, too. And I think that that has to kind of all play together.
Cause it, cause that's, um, when we had the, uh, I think it was like the work session earlier this year, that was one of the questions I had, cause I know that, and Marshall, um, with, with them, um.
With the consolidation?
Yeah, of everything in the chamber and all that stuff. So, um, my question was pretty much in that vein, too. It was just like, you know, cause, um, is, I mean, from what you know, has that been effective? Or is it too early for, to tell with them partnering?
I want to be politically correct here, okay?
Okay.
Um, I, first of all, I think it is still pretty early days.
Okay.
Um, the situation there may be a little different, because they had a number of organizations that had a lot of money to throw into the pot and to buy somebody services, basically, to try and do some development.
Okay.
Um, our chamber is not wealthy. Um, we're not wealthy. The DDA is not wealthy. So the financial picture is very much different. So for instance, if somebody thought Southwest Michigan should come over here, they'd have to do it for free, basically. And, you know, what are the chances of that? So, so I've, I have had conversations with the board over the last couple, three years about that kind of thing, um, as one of many alternatives.
Uh-huh.
Um, but I think we're hampered by funds right now.
Anybody else have any questions for Peggy? Okay, I have a couple.
Okay.
All right. Um, the groundbreaking for the hotel, is that gonna be before the winter, do you think?
I have not heard anything official from the developer.
Okay.
Uh, there's some discussion about the possibility of some sort of celebration this fall.
Okay.
Whether it would be a groundbreaking or not, I don't know, and I don't think it's all firm, but there's at least the possibility of something like that.
Okay, so there may be something before the snow flies?
Yes, maybe.
Unless the snow flies early this year.
Well, true.
As far as the dialysis center, um, you know, they've done a lot of excavating over there, um, but it doesn't look like they started the building. Are we still on target for having it open at the end of, at the first of the year?
Uh, as far as I know, their, their schedule has not slipped. There was an awful lot of grading that had to happen, and that's, I'm sure, what you're seeing right now. Um, so I, I'm sure that they figured that into their time schedule, but I'm not, I'm not over exactly what their schedule is.
It just looked like they had taken away an awful lot of earth.
They had to, yeah. They needed to bring that grade.
Yeah, way down.
I, we worked climbing that hill for that.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Groundbreaking.
Really. Um, and the last thing I had was just a comment. I noticed, um, on the freeway, there is a billboard for Brimbo. And it's, it says you can send resumes. Now, it's probably not for the new construction, but are they hiring at Brimbo? Is that why?
Oh, I think they have started some hiring for the foundry.
For the new foundry?
No, they could be, that could be other positions, too.
Uh-huh. But I did notice that that, I thought that was a wonderful sign when I saw that they were starting to advertise. That's a good, that's a good thought. So, go ahead, Garrett.
You mentioning that made me think of the, I think I mentioned it at the last council meeting, about the dialysis center. And when, um, the officials from, um, the hospital made, uh, announcement to planning commission about it, they mentioned, you know, because that process takes a number of hours, you know, people are usually sitting there.
Right.
Um, and so, um, is that something you could look into, too, in terms of, I don't know, finding some way to take advantage of that, if people are sitting there with a relative? Uh, and if they, you know, want to find some way to have them come into town, um, if they're sitting there, you know, for a number of hours, because?
I think, um, my impression is that Oakland will make, oh, make the, the person with the patient aware of what's available in town to do. And presumably, I mean, got here, so most of them probably have transportation. So it's probably less of a problem with that particular group
Okay.
than it would be with all the people that we've talked about before.
Okay.
Um, but if there's some sort of a regional transportation system, clearly, that would pick up at that area, too.
Well, I, I wasn't talking so much about the transportation, but just more about, like you say, like the things that they make them aware of, if there's some kind of, um.
And that's the sort of thing the chamber often will do, is get some literature to
Okay.
them, for instance, and, and, um, that their literature is provided by the individual entities that are, that have something to talk about. But, but they're pretty good about getting it.
Anyone else have any questions for Peggy? Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Sounds exciting.
It's a great time.
I could just add a comment before Peggy leaves. I also want to mention that, um, Peggy and the EDC have been exceptionally supportive of our redevelopment-ready community process. In fact, she had a staff person pretty much dedicated to making certain that we're crossing all of our RTs and dotting our i's so that we can move this process along and, um, really facilitating our relationship with the MEDC. So we have a very strong and positive relationship, and it's thanks and strong, a major part to Peggy and her leadership, so thank you.
Thank you. We expect to have some of that due September, I think, um, for you to review and hopefully, for us to.
Thanks, Peggy.
Thank you.
Um, we're moving on now to citizens' comments. Um, persons addressing the city councils shall limit their comments to the agenda items only and no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Does anybody have any comments? Citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Approval, I need a motion for approval of the regular session minutes from August the 3rd, 2015. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And the next items for individual discussion, the discussion of the Austin Avenue abatements.
Um, that's a situation I have. Everything is fine. It's in your packet on the progress from the three addresses. Uh, I just, my hat's off to, uh, city employee John Tracy and Cornerstone for a fine job. It's laid out in your packets, the progress and the dignity and respect they've extended to these, uh, property owners to, to meet, uh, when the owner is available to meet and look to have a demolition in, in the future. And I just think that progress is being made to bring the area back to life, um, as a business area. Uh, I'm just so excited. Uh, as I see, um, Albion College come west and downtown development, I just feel that, you know, to be a viable city, as downtown is developing, uh, we've developed this business district also. It's really been in disrepair for years, and I'm just very happy and satisfied. And thank all the city workers, uh, and Cheryl, who, who put great work in. I think that the executive summary in our packets are just great. Covers everything. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barnes? Any comments about the Austin Avenue abatements? Okay, we'll move on to.
One of the property owners is located in Hawaii, and I was willing to go there to speak.
Can you take a council person?
Yeah, that'd be in the budget session. Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Okay. Um, item B, request for approval of resolution 215-25, raising the minimum age of legal access to tobacco products.
I move that we table that at the time until we have a full council sitting.
So moved, or so supported.
Okay. Um, do we have to have a roll call vote for that?
We can do it on the voice vote, but if I could first ask, um, Ms. Wolf, is there any time constraints relative to getting this, um, resolution to you? Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, okay, all in favor of tabling the item for the time being until we have full council?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
Okay. Councilman Barnes?
Yes.
Okay, we will table that item for the time being. We'll move on to C, which is the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you. As was mentioned, um, previously, the Downtown Development Authority did approve, um, the 11 facade grants um, for up to, a reimbursement of up to $1,000 each for the, um, individual properties and their projects. So we're really excited to see those going forward, so we're looking forward to some beautifications happening in the downtown area. The recreation department has been really rocking and rolling. They had a, um, youth basketball tournament on Saturday, the 8th, in partnership with the Build Albion Fellows. It was for youth, and they, they had a great turnout. It was a lot of fun. And in fact, they're talking about making it a series of tournaments next summer. So look for some more fun things to happen. And if you haven't been down to Holland Park on Friday evenings, um, from 6:00 to 9:30, DJ Larry Williams is there playing the Odies with the Goody's, and people are having so much fun. Families and adults dancing, just sitting back relaxing, playing cards. And I'm, I am the Midwest champion. I don't care what anybody else says. And dominoes. It's just good, good family fun there, and it's really nice to see so many people enjoying the parks. Um, also, I want to thank the United Way, because they, um, they gave recreation a donation of, um, fix, approximately $5,600 to support a summer youth programs. And we know how important that is to give, um, our young people some healthy alternatives in the summer. And our camps are quite popular with the young people. And also, we have the community bike rides, and they're growing in popularity. Uh, we just had one this past weekend. The next one will be on Saturday, the 29th. They start at 9:00 AM in front of, um, City Hall, and they end up at the farmer's market. So then we can, you know, share and have a good time there and get some of those local produce. So it's a lot of great fun. And one of the things I want to work on, too, with the college in particular, is to have some night rides. Have you seen the slow roll in Detroit? They have the bikes all lit up. It's really just an excuse for me to get lights for my bike. But I think it'll be a lot of fun to have that here in town, too. You know, have the bikes with lights on them going through town together. It's, it's just a great activity that we can look forward to. Finance Department, um, the last day to pay the summer taxes was on the 10th, so they've been pretty busy this past week or so. And, um, staff also has been working on getting some additional training on the BSA packages. So we're trying to encourage them to get additional training and education to strengthen their skills. Um, and as you know, the, um, the budget workshop has been scheduled for Monday, the 31st. I believe it's 6:30, and it'll be in the mayor's conference room. Um, public services, uh, as part of the reorganization that we approved in the last budget, the current budget, we now have six general foreman positions, so we want to, um, recognize those individuals. Um, Joe Pace, Scott Clark-Curty?
Curty.
Curty, Jay Loomis, Kevin Monroe, Clarence Nelson, and Larry Maynard. So we're looking forward to them having, um, some positive impact and, and helping with the management of our staff in those areas. So that's some exciting news. And public safety, they've, they have become so popular in the community. It's hard to find Scott, cause he's always speaking at various events. Um, but he's also going to be speaking at the Fork Senior Center on Friday, August 21st. They are, um, talking about the marijuana legislation. And also, we want to, um, recognize that PSL Nicole Wiegand has been temporarily assigned as a detective in the detective bureau. The Citizens Recreation Advisory Committee, which you recall is addressing the master plan. They've been assessing the parks. They're also conducting some surveys. And their next meeting is going to be tomorrow at 12:00 noon in the mayor's office. And, um, some things going on in the community. I just, um, wanted to note it that the Albion NAACP and with the public schools are having a back-to-school celebration on August 22nd. That's a Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the community school. Both recreation and public safety will be there supporting that. And there's another back-to-school, um, for students regardless of which school they attend, uh, but who are residents of Albion. That, this one will be at Holland Park on the 29th, from 11:00 to 4:00. And again, recreation and public safety will be in attendance there. The crazy about the kazoo activities are going on, and we're really thrilled, um, to have Jim Leonardson and our department supporting those activities this year to help clean up the Kalamazoo River, because you see there's lots of areas where there's tree branches and debris that are obstructing the people who want to enjoy our riverways. And I have a date of some of the Canothe kazoo activities. And I just received an invitation today to the Albion High School Alumni Association. And they're having their 12th annual Albion High School Distinguished Alumni Dinner on Saturday, September 19th at 6:30 at Tennant Hall. And they are honoring Reverend Robert Brown, Glenn Reed, Mayor Joe Domingo, Ronnie Sims, and David Locke. So we're really proud that we have two of our own colleagues here who will be recognized. own colleagues here who will be recognized as distinguished alumni, so I hope everyone will be able to support and attend that event. And as Peggy had also mentioned, we had a meeting today with Representative Bruce Mcatee from Senator Gary Peters' office, to talk about, you know, different resources and how we can be connected with the, on the federal level, in terms of trying to make certain that we're leveraging whatever opportunities that exist in the programs and grants and funding, so that we can be, we can gain benefit here for us here in Albion, so he was very receptive, and we were glad to get that first initial, and he'll be hearing a lot from us. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Cheryl. Feature agenda items? Anybody have anything they want on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to motion to excuse the absent council members.
So moved, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens' comments? Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes, and proper decorum is required. Does anybody have any citizens' comments? Mike?
I was just going to make a comment concerning Mr. Brown's question about long-range planning. Sometimes we don't think about how long it takes to do some of the things we do, and one of the things that reminds me every time I go to East Michigan, is how long the reconstruction of East Michigan has taken to happen out through Albion Township, but that's also in conjunction with working with Peggy and the city on developing the property out there and attracting business, because that's an awful attractive location. So hopefully, when those improvements are done, that'll make it a little more attractive for businesses to come in and want to locate out there. The other thing that's going to happen, and I still, I don't know where the funding is for the brick street downtown, but it is on the state's list down in the future, so you've got a lot going on, and if we can approve the street down there, you know, again, all that adds, but that's probably been 10, 15 years of planning, so you have to have a long vision, and I think our state and federal politicians need to learn that.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Morris.
These citizens aren't here, but on the campaign trail, I had reassured some residents, I'm not going to say their names, Hartwell, west of Eaton, he was very concerned about his street. I told him I would bring that out, so I went publicly to let those residents, one, know that I am still attempting to get some of those things done. Another resident, Miller Circle, has contacted me several times about low-hanging branches in front of his house, and I just want them to publicly know I'm still working toward trying to get those things done. As I stated, our city's workers are very busy, they're working 50% less manpower, but I'm planning to keep my word and try to get those things done. Thank you.
Just to clarify on the roads, that is something that's an agenda, that will be an agenda item on our retreat, too. We're going to, we'll go over that and talk about which streets are going to have to be fixed in the next year, maybe two years, so that we can do some planning for that. Were there any other citizens' comments? Seeing none?
Oh, and thanks, Colin, for the memo. I wanted to thank the attorney for the memo that was sent out. I appreciate that.
Okay. No citizens' comments, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Does anyone have any discussion? Gee, I think everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, that's wonderful. That'll be a special night.
Mrs. Brown, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.